So you'll do your presentation, but don't make the motion. Just read the executive summary and then I'll explain what's going on.
Thank you. I'm going to call to order this March 11th meeting of the Richfield City Council. It is 7:05, and I appreciate your patience. Our work session right before this ran overtime, so thank you all for your patience as we get started five minutes late. If you are able, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the public, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the open forum, and participants can share their comments in person by voicemail or email, or may also request to participate virtually. For information on submitting comments in the future, refer to the council agenda and minutes page at richfieldmn.gov/citycouncil. I have two comment cards tonight, so we'll call people up one at a time, and you can sign in when I call you, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council. The council will be listening and taking notes, but it's not set up to be like a question and answer period, so if there is a question that comes up, it'll, the staff will follow up at the next meeting with the answers. So we'll just all be taking notes on what you have to say. So first of all, I have, I'm having trouble reading this, so I think it says Lovely Asmer, so if, if, on short-term rentals, so you can come up and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Stand and speak from?
Yes.
Okay.
Tell us, tell us your name and address.
Yeah, sorry about the handwriting. I know it's chicken scratch. My name is Lowell Asmeru, and I'm here to speak on behalf of short-term rental hosts. All right. So to get started, I'd like to share a little bit of my history here with Richfield. I've lived here for a little over four years. I owned a home here in 2018 to 2019. I currently have long-term rentals here in Richfield and an Airbnb in another city. So I'm here because I have a vested interest in demonstrating that Airbnbs are essentially a net positive for the communities that they are in, and I'm concerned about some of the proposals for new rules that are essentially blanket rules that would apply to everyone and affect people's ability to essentially run Airbnb or another form of short-term rental. And I want to say that I understand the issues that our communities are facing today due to short-term rentals and that those should be addressed. It's just that I am not in favor of the rules that are being proposed as part of that solution. So I'd also like to reiterate the benefits of having short-term rentals in our community. I don't think that those are often communicated or shared, as the 1% situations are more what are known community-wise and publicly, right? For example, in my instance, I've had my neighbor, like literally direct neighbor next to me, hosting their friends and family for the event of their daughter's wedding. I've had people in the neighborhood come and stay at my place for their father having passed, having extra guests and family members staying either next door or a few doors down has been of tremendous help to them, both financially and just the ability to be able to be close and not have to commute so far for the events as they're going through those trials and tribulations. We've also had church groups that have brought, you know, at-risk youth on trips here out to Minnesota from different areas and have been able to stay in Airbnbs. That makes it more cost affordable as well. Just to go on from not just the, you know, nice occasions to have an Airbnb available, but actual business reasons to have available, available Airbnbs and how they benefit the community, I'd also like to share that there have been traveling nurses, traveling construction workers during COVID when we didn't have staffing available coming and staying at Airbnbs. The reason I point these things out is because, again, the community benefits from these events, because businesses that rent places that look for affordable means to host their staff are also saving on costs, which plays a role in whether or not they're going to effect, effectively inflate prices for their end consumers, right? All of that being said, I think, again, I'll reiterate that Airbnbs are a net positive for the community. I think that there are some concerns within certain communities that definitely need to be addressed and should have rules that protect the people within that community as well. I believe that there should be a basis for having a track record of repeat violations for individual Airbnbs, and that those individual Airbnbs should have their rights to be a host removed if they do not themselves address the concerns of the community.
All right. Thank you, Lowell.
Thank you.
And next, we have Sarah Morris again.
Hello. And I have bought our first home here in Richfield, and we have lived our first 12 years of our marriage here in Richfield, first on Portland Avenue right here and then on Thomas. We currently live in Minneapolis, just over 62, and we care very much about Richfield. We are short-term rental owners, and we have one property here in Richfield, and we maintain a high standard of cleanliness, property maintenance, and management, of strict management of our properties. We watch over our properties and we screen our applicants. We can and have canceled our guests because of reviews that were not favorable to the community. We have cameras outside our properties and address issues before they become problems. We specifically list on our house rules that there are no events or parties and to be respectful of the neighborhood. We also currently personally have a three-night minimum, and we have found that helps eliminate those that come to party, because we do not want to be a party house. We have met our neighbors and given them our personal cellphone numbers, so if they have any issues that we ask that they would contact us directly, that we can be responsible neighbors. Most of our guests that we have had in our past five years of being hosts have been kind, respectful, and understanding that they are staying within the neighborhood, and they are pleased to have a quiet and comfortable place to be respectful of those neighbors. I believe that short-term rentals provide a service to the community. Staying in Richfield can offer great experiences of what it means to live in Richfield and the urban hometown. They can experience local restaurants and shopping, and they can visit family within the area. And honestly, some of the hotels in this area, I would not have my children or my grandchildren stay in. There has been discussed of putting a week or more minimum on short-term rentals, and that would be essentially eliminating the ability to, for us to, to operate a short-term rental within the community. We do the three-night minimum. We also respectfully consider grandfathering any of the current owners. The city of Mound did this in 2018. Or putting a cap on the percentage of short-term rentals versus single-family homes within the community. There are currently 72 self-reporting and 0.7% of the total stock of homes. That's what it represents. We already have rental licenses and inspections that are required by the city, and if there is a non, if there could be a requirement for those who are non-owner-occupy to self-identify, that maybe we could mitigate any losses for the rentals for any nuisance properties. We do understand that the decisions need to be easy for the staff to implement and how we can be a benefit to the community and work on this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for open forum? All right. Thank you to both of our commenters. We appreciate your input. Next, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes of the city council work session meeting from February 25th, 2025, and the city council regular meeting from February 25th, 2025.
I move approval of both sets of minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 All opposed, we have approved the minutes. Next, we'll move on to a presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Police Chief Jay Henthorn, and we have a commendation for some community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. It is my privilege to be here tonight to honor two outstanding members of the community for going above and beyond to help save someone from serious injury or death. We have always believed that it takes the community to help us with the jobs that we do on a daily basis, from dealing with crime, individual safety, and the quality of life for our community members. These two community members, Aubrey Drew and Chase Simpson, exemplify the mission of helping others and helping us. They are here tonight to be presented with the department commendations for the actions they took on an extremely cold night on Sunday, February 16th, 2025. Before I present the commendations, I would like to read the letter that accompanies them. On behalf of the Richfield Police Department, I want to extend my deepest appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to both of you for your swift and compassionate action in calling 911 to report a man lying in the street during the recent extreme cold weather. Your decision to promptly alert authorities made all the difference in a life and death situation. Thanks to your call, our officers were able to respond quickly and provide immediate assistance to the individual, ultimately saving his life. The conditions that night were dangerously cold, and without your quick thinking, there is no doubt that the outcome could have been far worse. Your actions exemplify the kind of community spirit that we deeply value in our community members. It is people like you who make our neighborhoods safer and stronger, and we incredibly, we are incredibly grateful for your willingness to get involved when it mattered the most. You not only demonstrate exceptional awareness of a potential emergency, but you also showed great compassion by taking the time to ensure that help was on the way. Please know that your efforts have made a lasting impact on our department. You have helped save a life, and we will always be thankful for your dedication to the well-being of others. Once again, thank you for your quick thinking and kindness. You are a true hero in our community. So I'd like to welcome up Aubrey Carlson and Shane Simpson. Chase, I'm sorry. So Chase, here's your department commendation. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Chief Henthorn, did you get pictures? Or did you want pictures? Oh, no, go ahead. I think it's important to have pictures.
You should go down to the [inaudible]. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we have approved the agenda. Moving on to the consent calendar, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider approval of Part 1 of the West Metro Multi-Community Wellhead Protection Plan and adoption of a resolution authorizing participation in the development of Part 2 of the West Metro Multi-Community Wellhead Protection Plan. Item B, consider approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Richfield Foundation's A Toast to Richfield Event to take place on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, in the atrium area of Woodlake Center located at 6601 Lyndale Avenue South. Item C, consider the approval of an agreement allowing Richfield Department of Public Safety to accept grant monies from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar. Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, and we've approved the consent calendar. I'll turn it over now for item number five to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. This item is a public hearing in consideration of the ratification of previously approved ordinance amendments to City Code Section 550 Flood Plane Management Regulations, previously adopted by the city council on January 14th, 2025. The first section, public hearing and ratification background, on January 14th, 2025, the Richfield City Council conducted the second reading and approved amendments to City Code Section 550 about flood plane management regulations. Um, but now, as the staff at the time, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources desired that a public hearing be held prior to the adoption of the revised ordinance. After consulting with the city attorney, staff has determined that the best course of action is for the city council to hold a public hearing, consider any objections or concerns to the previously approved ordinance amendments, and then vote to ratify the previously approved ordinance amendments. The city council may also choose not to ratify the previously approved ordinance amendments and direct staff to appeal or further revise the ordinance based upon comments heard at the public hearing. And then background on the ordinance amendments themselves. In April of 2024, the MCWD adopted new rules applicable to flood plane management. The previously approved revisions align city ordinances with the new district requirements while maintaining established requirements concerning the FEMA-designated flood plane. The previously approved amendments also clarify administration of the ordinance by designating the Water Resources Engineer as the official responsible for administering the ordinance. Does staff have anything to add at this time?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, no, we don't. It's pretty straightforward.
And I, it is not particularly exciting, but it will compliment staff on this wonderful public hearing checklist, which is going to make it really easy right now. Okay, we will have a public hearing for this item. Any resident wishing to participate in the public hearing, please proceed to the podium one at a time, provide your name and address prior to your comment. Council will hear your comment. If you would like staff to follow up, please include your name and phone number or email on the sign-in document located in the podium. To ensure everyone has time to speak, each comment will be limited to three minutes in length. As a reminder to residents, the public hearing is a time for council to listen to, but listen but not respond. Questions are asked, they may be addressed as part of the council discussion on the issue, or staff will follow up after the meeting. So the public hearing for considering ratification of the previously approved ordinance amendments about Section 550 Flood Plane Management Regulations is now open.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing? I'm not seeing anyone approaching the podium, so I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing? Then a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, and we have closed the public hearing.
All right. I move that we ratify the previously approved ordinance amendments to City Code Section 550 Flood Plane Management Regulations, previously adopted by the city council on January 14th, 2025.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, and we have ratified the previously approved ordinance. Thank you. Our next item, we'll go on to item number six, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider the approval of the second reading of an ordinance updating requirements for maintenance of fowl. Authorize a resolution to add the permit application fee to the existing fee schedule and authorize a summary ordinance publication via resolution. Section 905.37 of Richfield City Code pertains to regulations around owning fowl, chickens, ducks, et cetera. Sustainability commissioners and residents wanted to increase the number of fowl allowed to be kept to be more in line with average flock sizes and what neighboring cities allow. These proposed revisions also include detailed requirements for coop space and other reasonable conditions, nuisance language, and requiring a permit application and fee to be submitted.
All right. Now, we had put a notice of a public hearing for this into the newspaper, but we don't legally, we aren't legally required to have one. However, in the entrance, interest of transparency, we will allow public comment. So is there anyone here present that wishes to comment on the fowl ordinance? I know we did have one person that sent something in. Is there anyone here that would like to comment? Then I'll turn it over to the city clerk, Friedrich, to please read the comment that we received.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We did receive one comment regarding the fowl ordinance, and it is, it was emailed by Kathy B., and it indicates keeping chickens has caused the number of mice to increase to the point that pest control companies are seen in our area like never before. We have trapped at least a dozen around our house. Neighbors behind us have a coop. No one is regulating the number of chickens that are kept. Neighbor knows of the three-chicken rule, but they had four or more before they all died from something. House on 69th and 18th had numerous chickens plus a rooster that would crow in the backyard. Chickens were known to run around Cedar Avenue. A house on 76th has a yard full of free-range chickens that seem to reside in the garage. Richfield needs to license or regulate these home coops. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Did staff have anything they wanted to add?
All right. I make the motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance updating requirements for maintenance of fowl and authorize a resolution to add the permit application fee to the existing fee schedule and authorize a summary ordinance publication via resolution.
Actually, I did have questions.
We'll second it, and then we'll take questions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We're open for discussion and questions. Councilmember Burke.
I was looking at a subdivision five, yep, subdivision five G. Five G talks about the annual permits for each of the first three years, and then towards the end of that section, it talks about following the initial permit period. The permitting must still comply with all provisions, and the city may still revoke permits for violations of the subdivision and such conditions. If someone has their license revoked, do they have to go back to another three-year period of applications, or do they automatically somehow get it revoked without having to go through that three-year period?
Councilmember Burke, thank you for the question. I can start to address that, and then we also have Jennifer Anderson, who might have a better answer as it relates to licensing and how we deal with similar situations like nuisance dogs and things like that. The intention of the code and the application process is, of course, if you get through the three-year period and you have an issue, a nuisance reporter, you know, an issue with your fowl, then yes, you would have to start the process again, you know, prove that there is, the issue has been rectified, is not a problem anymore. Staff would monitor, you know, the said property and make sure that's in compliance, and, you know, obviously, fowl can be removed from the property as well, and that's addressed in the code. I'm not sure the legal language or the logistics as it relates to permitting. Jennifer, if you have anything to add? Awesome.
So I guess, so unless, is there somewhere else in the ordinances where it makes it clear, the procedures that for someone to, after their license is revoked, to get their license again? Or would it be useful to make it clear that if someone's license is revoked, they would have to start all over?
Councilmember Burke, that's a great question. I'm not sure if that's addressed in other sections of code related to similar situations, or if we would have to go back and, and make sure that it is properly. I don't have the code in front of me either to figure that out, but mental note, and we will follow up.
I think it would be useful just to make it clear to the public
Yep.
that if their license is revoked, they're going to have to start all over. But I'm sure we'll get questions eventually.
Yeah, and as, as same manager Rodriguez just mentioned, I was thinking as well, there will be language, all language that's pertinent to this will be on the application as well. So we'll figure out what's the right spot for that, if it is in code, if it's in the application, if it's both, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I did have a question. I know that in the first reading, we had questions about the permitting, and so we've changed that. So can you go over the things that have changed from the first reading to the second reading so that the public is clear on that?
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we went back, originally in the first reading, it was discussed to be a one-time fee, one-time permit, valid indefinitely unless there are issues, as we have mentioned. We went back and staff talked amongst ourselves and figured out a compromise that would not require an annual permit in perpetuity, but would require a significant time period to display that a resident in the household does not have issues with their flock. And this is important because, you know, obviously, issues can arise, especially with folks who don't have experience raising chickens or geese or ducks or, you know, fowl. And that's also why the education requirements in there as well, make sure that people are aware of what they're getting into and have the proper tools and experience. And so three years was landed on as, as the compromise for that, an additionally reduced permit fee so that the annual permit fee totaled after three years is roughly the same as other cities who do have a one-time permit fee, because the goal of this is not to price residents out of, you know, owning chickens, cultivating, you know, all of, all of that, the fowl. We really wanted to make sure that while the city was able to monitor where flocks are, especially for cases of avian flu and other reasons, that it's also done in a way that covers staff time and doesn't penalize residents from pursuing this in their, you know, homes and backyards. So those were a few things that we discussed and changed. That was the biggest change.
Thank you, and I, I think that's fair to, to have a lower fee over three years so we have time to implement this. With regards to the public comment that we had about things like rodents or flock sizes that exceed as part of the permitting process and the education, would some of that be addressed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It definitely would, I think. You know, I've never taken a chicken-raising or fowl-raising course, so I can't necessarily speak to those details, but it does cover, and our code covers, you know, coop regulations, you know, where it has to be, what it, what it's made out of, you know, like sizing, all that kind of stuff, how far away from lot lines so that you are not ideally bothering neighbors, things like that. Courses talk about, you know, pest prevention, you know, how to raise chickens, diseases, all sorts of aspects of, of fowl raising. And then I think that, you know, I, I don't own chickens personally, so I can't necessarily speak to, you know, whether something is a common practice or not, but obviously, our code enforcement staff or environmental health staff are very focused on, on public health. environmental health staff are very focused on, on public health and public safety, and so they will also be learning the, the requirements and things, so we can citywide have a better idea of what is happening, who, who has how many chickens, how can we best promote these public health practices, all at the same time, that many people are looking into this as a potential, you know, way to get cheaper eggs, or, you know, things like that. So we, we recognize the appeal in the community, and we want to make sure that it's being done well and safely.
Thank you. Other questions? One, City Attorney Techen?
I can, I can give my comment after council is done with discussion.
Oh, okay. One question I had asked, because it says, no person shall sell or breed any chickens, ducks, geese, pigeons, or fowl within the city of Richfield. So I'm understanding we don't want to have like a commercial farming operation. But then I did have the question later when it talked about rescue groups, and so I want to clarify, the answer I got back from staff is that if somebody decides they don't want their flock anymore, they would have to then give it away to someone else. You couldn't just sell it.
Yeah. So rehoming fowl is a topic that came up, actually, right when this first came up in the Sustainability Commission. One of our commissioners does own fowl and has had to help other folks rehome fowl before, and so it was very much a topic of conversation. The intent behind that language is, yes, to make sure that we don't have folks who are breeding, raising, and, and selling as like a commercial entity. But yes, if, if there is a situation where someone decides they don't want their flock anymore, or something happens and they can't maintain that, those fowl would have to be rehomed. There are existing resources to do so. And also, by increasing the limit of fowl allowed to be owned in Richfield, that does provide a buffer for some folks to, who might want to take in more fowl. So this kind of also helps create some capacity legally in the city as well.
And then the other topic that came up in the public comment was about roosters, and I'm assuming, do we allow roosters? I didn't think we did.
So we also had this conversation in staff. So roosters are covered under, I believe, the, the noise section of our nuisance code. And so technically, that if they are being a nuisance, that is covered there and, and will be dealt with. We didn't call it out specifically in here. We had not received this public comment ahead of time or anything like that. So if it is an issue, we can always come back and amend, but they are covered in code.
All right. Thank you. And I was glad to hear that you said that part of the education is how to deal with pest control and those types of things, so that helps with that comment as well. Any other discussion? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I didn't have a question until the, the last, the last response. So do, does it need to be like, like other nuisances, where you have to have complaints from multiple neighbors at once, and like it's a multi-month process? It's not just a clear violation if you have a rooster?
I would have to defer to Jennifer for that. I do want to clarify, thank you, Councilmember Hayford, Hayford O'Leary, on roosters being a nuisance. We have heard from situations in other cities of people who do own roosters that don't crow, or they keep them inside during the crowing hour, whatever the situation is, and they aren't a nuisance. So there might be, you know, not, not all roosters might present as a nuisance.
One of the issues with roosters is oftentimes when people establish flocks, they start with chicks, and you can't, it's hard to sex a chick, because you don't know what it's going to be until it gets older. So you might end up with a rooster. We have not had complaints about roosters in the city. If we do have them, however, if they do become a nuisance, and they can be very loud, we can cover that by the Public Health Nuisance Ordinance. There would have to be complaints. But as Rachel said, that wasn't directly written into the code, because it's, it can be hard to tell in the beginning what they've got for a flock. So I think this could be kind of a, we have to wait and see how this rolls out, and certainly, if we need to amend the ordinance, we can do that. But to date, you know, in, in the comment that was, the comment card that was read earlier, is a prime example of that. And, and those are the things that we need to know about to, in order to address those within the neighborhood. So that's how we'll handle that.
To clarify, have there been any nuisance-type complaints based on our existing allowance of chickens?
Uh-uh.
About roosters? Okay. Okay. I guess I would just say, in, in, as informal direction, if that, if we do get complaints about that, it'd be great to know that, rather than just dealing with them one at a time, because I probably would want to prohibit it if it's a frequent issue.
Right.
Any other comments or discussion?
This makes me second thinking chickens. Real.
Any other comments, questions? I did have one other question. Can you explain how you're going to roll it out, since there are a number of people with flocks already, to know that there's new rules?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. That's a great question. So I think it'll be a little bit, you know, here and there with communication, as in, we'll use existing channels, the city's Facebook page, the city's newsletters, the Sustainability Newsletter. I do know that there is a Facebook group for chicken and fowl owners in Richfield, and I bet that that is going to be heavily utilized. The commissioner that initially brought this up has a lot of contacts, so I think we'll also, staff will ask him for, if there are any other spots in the community that we're missing, to get the word out and to make sure that folks are aware of the permit that's required. You know, it will take some time, since there's currently no permit required, and there's no existing database of, of where fowl exist in the city. But staff have already started thinking about the different communication channels.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? I think this is a good example of something that came organically from a commission, so thank you to the Sustainability Commission. Now, City Attorney Techen, you had something to add?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to Councilmember Burke's point about the, starting the three-year period over. If staff's in agreement that that was the intent here, what I would maybe suggest, that if that's a consensus on the council, I know there's a motion on the table, but if there is a consensus, in order to avoid having to bring this back to council again, there could be a separate motion directing staff to work with the city attorney to insert something clarifying that in the ordinance, which I think would be a pretty easy fix. And we could do that, and then you could vote on that motion, and then go back to your original motion. That's just a suggestion, if the council's in agreement with that, and if staff doesn't disagree.
So we have the original motion based on the table, or on the floor, and it's been seconded, so if somebody wishes to amend at this point, they could?
I'll make the motion to amend.
I'll second the motion to amend.
Okay. And to clarify, you want, can you state which year is?
City Council has suggested to, to allow staff to amend the proposal, section subdivision five G, to make it clear that what happens if someone loses their, if their permits revoked, what they're required to do in order to get their license back.
All right. So staff is clear in what the amendment is? All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? So we're just voting on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we've adopted the amendment. So now we're voting on the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the main motion as amended. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, Kathleen Balaban expressed concerns about how many items that the City Manager placed on the consent calendar. Just as a reminder, the consent calendar is for passing routine business. Often, those contracts and the spending that's approved in the, in the consent calendar has already been reviewed and approved by the council through the budgeting process. Also, just to let the public know that there are multiple steps in putting together an agenda. So we put together a draft agenda, the mayor reviews that agenda, and at that time can pull anything from the consent calendar and put it to be considered individually. Then the council gets to review the agenda and also can pull anything before the agenda is finalized. Once the agenda is finalized and posted, we have a very clear process during the council meeting that a council member can move to pull something from the consent calendar, and then it's considered individually. And we've done that a number of times. Tonight, I also wanted to talk about a legislative item, a bill that is gaining momentum at the legislature. As you know, you've been getting, well, you can read the newspapers, the legislative session is heating up. And while we feel like the legislative platform gives us a lot of guidance on how we as a city can advocate, we did want to bring this particular bill forward and get some more clarification on what we can do as a city in terms of advocacy. The bill would allow multifamily housing in any commercial district, except if it was heavy industrial. Staff continue to feel like this will be detrimental to the city, and we'd, we'd like to, again, request some more clarification. I have asked Community Development Director Melissa Payman to provide more details, and as she comes up, I do, I do want to just briefly summarize what's changed since the last time we discussed this, when we were passing the platform. As I mentioned before, the bill has gained momentum in the legislature. We also have two new council members, who were not there when we reviewed this provision and passed the platform. And again, I know this is an annual process, but the legislature isn't on our timetable, and so this could be passed to this session, and then we would have our, we wouldn't have a chance as a city to, to advocate one way or another. We also recently learned more about the 4D impacts on Richfield taxpayers as part of considering the HEMPLE proposal. We also know that both the Penn Station development and the Beacon developments are, are making progress, and they will be eligible for 4D. And just as a reminder, when these developments get 4D, they're taxed at a lower percentage, so they're paying less taxes, which that shifts that burden onto other Richfield property taxpayers. And then finally, both the financial and the stability outlook at both the federal and state level has changed and worsened since we first discovered this, I'm sorry, discussed it. And that means that we may have more reliance on the property tax. And that is all very uncertain, but it is a consideration as we consider it now. And I will turn it over to Community Development Director Melissa Payman.
Thank you, Katie. Members of the council, I don't have a lot to add to that. I provided some bullet points to you, or Katie provided some bullet points to you ahead of this meeting. You know, staff generally has, I would say, two major concerns about this type of bill. The, the first is just the lack of flexibility that we will have. In particular, I will bring up the 494 corridor. That is our most valuable commercial land in the community. The council has adopted a strategic plan that asks us to diversify the tax base, to increase the commercial percentage of the tax base. Allowing housing in our primary commercial corridor would make that more difficult. And that's, it's already a difficult prospect, getting more difficult with the local and federal situation. Additionally, there are environmental justice and equity issues that we see along the 494 corridor. As we've continued, and studies have continued to come out from the, from the EPA, from the American Medical Association, that talk about the long-term health impacts of living near these busy roads. One of the, one of the things that we will consider as we look at our comprehensive plan, this next update, which will kick off this fall, is if we should be promoting any additional housing along Interstate 494. If that's really a safe place for people to be living, especially when Richfield is able to provide enough land guided for and enough land that we support financially through our HRE and EDA to meet metropolitan housing guidelines and guidance for promoting housing and for building housing in our community. So we feel like a bill like this ties our hands, and, and we think that the council should reconsider whether or not we could oppose this particular portion of this bill.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. Just one other thing I wanted to add. We have been told, and I do believe that this is true, is that Richfield has a very good reputation for supporting affordable housing projects. So we bring that to this discussion. We, we are not seen as bad actors on this. We are seen as trying to do what we can to, to build affordable housing in Richfield, and so we, we bring that, that trust to the conversation. So we believe that we can be a very effective voice in these discussions.
So I had a procedural question. Are you just asking for feedback, or do we have to bring this back to a future meeting to actually take a vote on it, or can we do it informally here during this conversation?
Good question. We believe that the guiding principles that are in the platform are consistent with us asking to oppose this, and we would not bring the platform back. We, because the, because the legislative session evolves so quickly, and we can't anticipate in detail every issue that is going to arise, if it's covered in that broad platform, we're seeking clarity to be able to take a position on that, and that's what we're doing tonight.
All right. Now, is there any comments or questions? I know I probably precipitated this, because I started peppering staff with a lot of questions about this when it was coming up, because I wanted to understand it better. So I appreciate that, all the information that you provided that helped clarify it for me. I think that it would be, I would be in support of taking this position, because then we could offer some compromises of ways that the legislation could be amended, so that it could get at the purpose that was intended without harming cities like Richfield that already have a lot of low, affordable housing, but don't have very much commercial. We have a low percentage of commercial. So I think, I want to be able to help the broader problem without penalizing the people that have a lot, already have a lot of commitment to affordable, accessible housing. But I want to hear what other council members have to say about it, so. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So just to give some background, since especially Councilmembers Burke and Coleman Woods were not in the previous discussion, we did discuss exactly this type of bill when we updated our legislative platform on the annual schedule. At the time, there was a, a direction from the majority of the council to not take a position on this bill, and it was not added to the legislative platform. I object somewhat on principle to revisiting it so close after that decision, because we do have this annual process, and I don't think it's procedurally helpful to revisit those discussions, when although there have been some changes, they're fairly minor changes in context. That said, we're here. This, this bill is, is being considered and has a possibility, and I'm, I'm open to it somewhat. But just as context for why this bill even exists, there's a lot of cities, you know, far beyond Richfield, that do reserve large areas of the community for commercial, that refuse to allow affordable housing, refuse to allow apartments altogether in large areas of the community. And this opens up that land to be available for housing in communities that don't have a lot of it. So of course, our duty is to Richfield first and foremost, but I guess I want to be clear, like, why the legislature is even pursuing this. This makes a big difference on the state level of making more land available for affordable housing. I respectfully disagree with staff's environmental justice rationale in that we, we have long allowed housing along 494. We currently allow housing intermixed with commercial on 494. And if we wish to have better options with better environmental quality, we should do so by designated more land farther from freeways for multifamily, not banning more areas from building housing, which is what we would be talking about with that. I do think our, our situation of having limited commercial is somewhat unique, and I would strongly prefer that we advocate on that specific issue. Staff did bring an example of a position, for example, exempting cities that have a very low percentage of how, of land that is dedicated to commercial. I think that would better represent Richfield's interests. I think it would maintain the good faith reputation that council, or, excuse me, Manager Rodriguez, mentioned that we have, by showing, we support this principle. We support more housing in Minnesota. We support more affordability, and we recognize that not every city's playing ball in the way that we have. However, we have this very specific problem of needing to have some land dedicated to commercial. I would prefer we take a position like that, limited to our issue, rather than blanket opposition of this bill.
Thank you. Other thoughts or?
I would have to agree with Councilmember Hayford O'Leary on this one, just based on our own specific need here for, to maintain some commercial space and to, and to not just give it a blanket opposition.
So you would be okay with, with the compromise thing of saying that those cities that have less than 20% shouldn't be required?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
And I would, I would second that opinion. It's clear that Richfield does have minimal amount of development, of commercial space and industrial space, so it doesn't seem like- space, so it doesn't seem like this immediately applies to us, but definitely, we are part of a larger community called the state, and we should be recognized and supportive of the efforts to increase affordable housing throughout the state. So I would agree with Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's position.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I also throw a vote in for agreement with Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. There needs, obviously, there needs to be a healthy mix of commercial versus affordable housing, but given the size of where we are at and the location of the area, I would say that affordable housing, at this point, would be more prudent for the city than the mixture of retail.
So I think the, I looked up what the tax rates were for various things, and I believe the commercial tax rate is like 2%. And if we go to housing, it's 1.25 unless it's 4D, then it drops to 0.25. And I know I've heard from community members concerns about that we have to make sure we can afford the services, like for the fire and the police and all the other things. So we do have to have, one of our strategic goals is to have a diverse tax base, and so I think in our case, it would be harmful if we give away all of our commercial tax base because then we don't have any way to provide the fire and the service, the public safety, the public works, and all of the other things. So I do think that the compromise of saying if you have a commercial tax base of less than 20%, you should be exempted from this. Because I understand the overall broader thing in a lot of cities that are struggling to get enough affordable housing, but we really have gone forward trying to get affordable housing. So I think we need to talk about, let's make an exemption here because it's not one-size-fits-all for the entire state. So I think that's what I'm hearing as consensus, that we think that that would be a reasonable way to move forward. Staff, need any further clarification? Okay, so then, just since I'm going to be going over to speak with our representatives, am I allowed to say that that's what we discussed and that's what the council is moving forward on? I just want to clarify and make sure we're transparent here.
Great.
All right. Thank you. That was helpful.
Mayor, in this case, I'm not asking the city to change positions, but simply because we are talking about legislative lobbying, I just want to mention two items that I'm personally involved in. One that has gone to city staff specifically about the possibility of cities having the ability to use different design manuals for streets. That is not something that staff want to take a position on. They provided feedback to me that I've shared with the author of the bill, but I will be appearing just to share as an individual the experience that we had with the variance process for a street, so happy to discuss that with anyone. And then I will also be speaking in favor of a state ban on cities having parking minimums, something I took a position on last year. It is deliberate that Richfield does not have a position on that bill, and I will be very clear about that, but I just wanted everyone to be aware that that's happening.
Thank you. I appreciate that transparency. Any other comments, questions? City Manager Rodriguez, do you have anything else to add?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for all of the answering, all the questions. I know we've been sending a lot your way. Moving on, we'll go to claims and payroll.
I move approval of claims and payroll.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've approved the claims and payroll. Next, we'll move on to the hats off to hometown hits, and we'll try and mix it up a little bit here, so let's start off with Councilmember Burke.
No, unfortunately, I have nothing today.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I just wanted to share, we, Richfield hosted the MnDOT Active Transportation Summit last week, so Richfield Public Works staff gave a great presentation about how we've integrated, and active transportation just means bicycling, walking, things outside of a car. They gave a great presentation about what Richfield does. It was a winter theme, and that worked out really well, that we planned that storm, you know, the night of, so we got to see how the clearing operations go. The second day, I helped lead a walking tour with Chris Link, our Deputy Director Public Works, who is, of course, also in charge of the snow plowing crews, and he got to talk about how the design of the street and the sidewalk, you know, affect the ability to plow them well and all of that. And another close Richfield connection, our former Richfield School Safe Rustic School Director, Coordinator, Will Wislow, was the MnDOT staff member who was organizing that. So that was just very exciting, glad to be a part of it, and thanks to Public Works for doing that. I will also give another plug to be sure to vote Richfield by Thursday on the Strongest Town Contest at strongesttown.com, and thank you, everyone, for promoting that.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, this past several weeks and the next few weeks to come, I've been involved in the Citizen Police Academy that's held here on Thursday evenings, and it's been a very great learning experience for the many, many citizens that are coming out to learn all about how the police department works and what the community does to keep everybody safe in the community. I believe I've heard this is the largest group that they've had in several years.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely want to recognize those Athena Award finalists at the Richfield High School. Some of them are kids that I've known since they were little athletes, and so shout out to Anaya Johnson, Zariana Rennie, Desiree Chapelle, Maddie Mendaba, excuse me, Audrey Olson and Emma Govanat. They are, and I think ultimately Audrey Olson was the finalist, and I've probably known Audrey Olson since she was, before she was in kindergarten, so I think I'm proud to see that those ladies have really come into their own and taken athletics and their student leadership and really raised the bar. So thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. I wanted to do a hats off to Community Development Director Palman and to the Youth Frontiers Program. So we were invited to participate in a women's leadership conference for high school, young women in high school, and it was put on by, at Visitation High School by Youth Frontiers, and they invited people from around the metro, and there were people there, I believe, from Holy Angels. So anyway, I walked in, and there was Community Development Director Palman that volunteered and gave her time to work on that, and it was really, really inspiring talking to all these young women. It was like a whole gymnasium full of just enthusiastic young women from all over the metro that were really excited, and there were some great discussions. So hats off to all the young women in Youth Frontiers and to Community Development Director Palman for donating her time for that. And I'll also do a hats off to our Public Works crew because that was really heavy snow, so thank you, everybody, for plowing us out and helping us get back up and running, functioning. Well, and BJ Scoog, who lives here in Richfield, was the one that invited us all to participate in it, so.
That's awesome.
So, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to a closed session, and at this point, the council is moving into a closed session meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute's Section 13D.05 subdivision 3B for an attorney-client privileged discussion regarding pending litigation. Michael P. Clubundy versus the City of Richfield et al., U.S. District Court, District of Minnesota. So can I get a motion to recess the regular meeting and move into a closed session meeting?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Burke and seconded by Councilmember Coleman Woods. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then we'll move into closed session. So we're going to be going to the conference room, and then we'll come back after the closed session. Thank you.
Okay, so we need to, everybody's back? Okay. The council will now reconvene the regular meeting following the closed session meeting. So, looking at the agenda, we have completed everything on the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we stand adjourned.